Hey, everybody. We are right at 7 o'clock and I see we've got a quorum of council available, so I will call this meeting to order. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Hossnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. First item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would invite everybody to join us for the pledge. If you would like to stand and shut off your camera, you're able to do so in the bottom left-hand tray of Zoom. And Dan will display the flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, you have an agenda, but for you this evening, I do have one modification that I would like to add as a new number six, right after the open forum. I'd like to add a special community notification with Captain Weiss. And so with that modification, is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
So moved.
You get a couple of seconds.
Motion and a second. And Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hossnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion is approved, or agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda this evening is open forum. We do have actually two items on the agenda this evening and two opportunities for community input. The first is this first one, open forum, and that is opportunity for members of the community to speak to council of any topic of their choosing. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And if you have, and remember that this is an opportunity for you to provide feedback to council. Council typically does not respond. We just gather input and will generally ask staff to work with any items that are presented. We also have on the agenda this evening the new agenda item number eight, A, which is for the Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage Facility, and we will have a public hearing as part of that item. And so if you would like to speak specifically to the mini storage facility, you are able to either do so now in open forum or wait until we get to that portion of the agenda. Also, there, I believe there may be some open forum items that have been submitted by email. And so I'll ask for those first, if there's been anything submitted by email, and then if there's any open forum items from any of our attendees this evening. Karen, is there anything from email?
Mayor, I have two emails and I can read. The first one is, it says, Karen, I appreciate you contacting me. There are three things I'd like given consideration. They are things I feel are annoying, unsafe, or depreciate the value of property. I am unclear about how to effectively and efficiently move forward on these three matters. The lack of lighting on the corner of 202nd Street North and Explorer Avenue North. This corner was lit by two ground fixtures that are part of the monuments erected when this land was developed in the early 2000s. For at least 15 years, the owners of townhomes half a mile from this corner were paying the power bill for these lights. In 2018, they realized this and stopped paying these costs, which made total sense to me. Canexus shut off power and the corner went dark. I feel a simple and cost-effective solution is to restore power with the city paying the power bill, as happens with typical streetlights. City staff does not agree and tells me to imitate a process that includes a streetlight request form, streetlight petition. I am 67 years old, and with COVID-19 in play, that's not something I am willing to do. I want to elevate the matter to a higher level for review. How can that happen? I've asked the city council to consider this in the past, and I'm doing so again. I feel the city needs to establish requirements for where property owners can and cannot keep trash and recycling containers when it isn't a collection day. The blue containers sitting in full view from the street are an eyesore and detract from the look and feel of the neighborhoods. Other cities have taken steps to address this. See the attached example from Prior Lake, Minnesota. And I feel it is time for Forest Lake to do the same. What do others think? I've shared this issue with city staff and was disappointed in the response. At some point in the past, many, perhaps most or all of the streets in my immediate area were built with pavement seams at regular intervals. They run across the full width of the roadway. As a result, driving a vehicle or riding a bicycle on these roads is anything from annoying and unpleasant to unsafe. Everton Avenue North and Fenway Avenue North, as marked on the attached map, are prime examples of what I'm referring to. I encourage anyone who isn't familiar with these seams to take a drive on these two roadways. Does the city acknowledge this situation and will new paving be installed in such a way as to eliminate breaks like this in the road surface? Anyone who would like more information or wants to talk further with me about these topics can do so. Resident Steve Wickstrom, 20190 Explorer Court, North, Forest Lake. And then the second letter that I have was originally sent to Kathy and then another section to city council. Says Kathy, we'd like to discuss our assessment matter with you sometime soon. Our most recent communication was emailed March 4, 2020, and Mayor Bain reached out to us with a considerate phone call. It's been a few months now, yet hopefully coronavirus has sufficiently subsided, such that we and Forest Lake City Council may resume working together once again towards agreement. The most recent payment proposal was attached to Jan's Cord Company email, and it is shown below. Rick, Special Assessment, March 4, 2020. Mayor Bain and City Council, I am here with Bob at Mayo Clinic where he is hospitalized. Please consider the attached plan to resolve the special assessment issue. This is something that we feel we can financially manage at this time. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration. Please address any correspondence or questions to me @, and she provides her phone number and email address. Thank you, Jan, Rick. And then they have provided a schedule of payment, and we would like an appointment to talk with you about this and look forward to hearing from you. Thanks again, Bob and Jan, Rick. And in email conversation, Bob had requested that I read that email to the council. I believe he is also here at the meeting and had wanted to speak as well.
Excellent. Before we move on, Karen, could you please forward both of those emails on to council if you haven't already?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Bob and Jan, Rick, welcome.
We'll get Bob to come back. Yes, thank you, Mara. We'll get Dan. Well, I wanted to thank city staff for help, helping us through a lot of this and for providing the link. Kind of, kind of exciting. I actually do quite a bit of Zoom. I'm working as a college professor, and most of the work is online. I also tutor several, several people and kind of getting used to this. Jan sings with the Sweet Adelines Chorus, and her quartet also beats by Zoom. So now we're getting used to it. More, more to the point, we have received on middle of last week and a special assessment agreement and payment schedule that is consistent with the information that we sent forward a few months ago, perhaps with a few, a few finalized matters put forward so that we are able to sign that agreement. We find it, which we did and submitted to Patrick on Friday. So with that said, that's a big, a big thank you. We'd like to have this resolved and move ahead with some, some plans to kind of get on board with some, some, some positive things going on with, with city of Forest Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. And I believe that that signed agreement that you have signed comes before council for final approval at an upcoming meeting.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here this evening.
We'll sign off.
Good night.
Good night.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? You may either raise your hand to be recognized or just jump in as well. Ask one more time, is there anybody else that wishes to speak in open forum this evening? I'm not seeing anybody. So we will close open forum, and we will move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is the special community notification. And we have Captain Weiss to walk us through this. Captain Weiss?
Yes, everyone hear me okay?
I hear you great.
All right, Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for adding this to the agenda, especially at late notice here. But today, we were notified today at 1:54 via email by the Minnesota Department of Corrections that we have a Level 3 predatory offender moving into our community. That Level 3 offender will move in on Wednesday, so we don't have a huge amount of time here. Our plan is on Tuesday, tomorrow, we're going to be filming and releasing a video here from the city of Forest Lake with a representative from the Minnesota Department of Corrections. Per Minnesota State statutes, public notification is required for all Level 3 offenders moving into a new community. The video will be released by 5:00 PM tomorrow night. All questions regarding the offender that the public has should be sent to info@ci.forest-lake.mn.us. A portion of the video, it's important to notice that we've watched several of these, a portion of the video does contain frequently asked questions. Minnesota Department, excuse me, Department of Corrections has been doing these for quite some time, and with COVID, they've, they've stepped up their game with the video and answering a lot of those questions that the public may have out front. And with the COVID-19 pandemic, video is allowed to be done. Normally, this in a normal environment would be done as a public hearing. But with time, this, the video is probably, obviously, the best way to get this information out as fast as we possibly can. Tonight, after the meeting, or probably during the meeting, I'm going to be posting the public information page that was prepared today. This information has all the public data that can be released regarding the Level 3 offender. And also, we will be notifying via email our schools that are within the city and also our prominent daycares. The timing wise, I'm going to try to get ahold of Washington County, get a list of the private daycares, but that's, that number is probably plentiful. And with time, it's going to be tough. So get the word out. It'll be on our Facebook page, it'll be on our main page, and post it, and press release to our local papers as well. I'd be willing to take any questions if anybody has them.
Members of council, any questions for Captain Weiss this evening? Just a point of clarification, you're filming the video tomorrow. When do you expect the video to be released?
Well, for sure by 5:00, but I'm anticipating earlier. I just want to give us enough lead time for the editing and the code. I'm not a big IT guy, but stacking with Dan today and the coding of it and getting it launched on our website. And we'll also share that link on YouTube, Twitter, and then everywhere, anywhere else we possibly can to make sure the community has enough notification. And this is, this is short, there's a short fuse on this, there is no doubt. We heard about it at 2:00 today, and here we are.
Is this typical timeframe turnaround of?
It is not. No, it's not. Typically, it's longer, but there was a snag in his residential planning upon release from correctional facility that fell through. He does have relatives here in, in the city that have agreed to, to take him. So that's, that's where, that's where the DOC is approved his lodging residence.
And who, and I think, I think you, any question that the community has beyond what is released in the video, where should those questions go?
Yeah, that's info@ci.forest-lake.mn.us.
And that's an email address, correct?
It is. Yep. And those will go directly to us. And we do have two officers, one detective and an officer that are predatory offender trained, that will be assisting with answering any of those questions. The information we can release publicly, we'll get out.
Thank you for letting us know. Counsel, any other questions you may have? Sam, you're on mute.
The, where the, the address where he's going to be staying, has that become public knowledge?
It is. I can release that. I'm going to send an email out. It's going to be, I can give you the block, Councilmember Hossnick. It's not the exact address. Let me make sure I'm accurate here. 1100 Block of North Shore Drive.
Okay. Thank you. Just so everybody.
Yep.
And, and that's going in a post that you're going to do yet this evening? Social media post?
Soon as I'm, I wanted counsel and mayor you to know before we release it publicly.
Thank you for the timely notification, and we'll be sure to reach out with any questions we may have.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, council, our next agenda item this evening is our, is the consent agenda. I will entertain any changes or emotion.
Mayor Bain, I'd like to pull consent agenda item L and make a motion to approve items A through K and N through Q.
There's a motion, and there is a second. Karen, could we have a roll call on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hossnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. And on the, moving to the regular agenda item, consent agenda item 6L, which is the CARES Act Expense Budget Amendment Number 1. Kathy?
I just wanted to draw the community's attention to an error in our packet. So if they're reviewing the packet this evening, it does not reflect the approved $25,000 expenditure or the $25,000 for expenditures and lost revenue for the Forest Lake Senior Center. The accurate memo can be found under item 7D. There's just a little bit of a mix-up there. So I just wanted to draw the community's attention to that in case anybody's online and reviewing this. So with that, I make a motion to approve consent agenda item 6L.
Second, a motion and a second. And Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hossnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion approves. And could we have the packet corrected to include that item, just so that there's not future, future questions? Thank you.
Hey, Ray.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gerard.
I just want to point out on item 6A, the pay the city bills, I want to commend who is now, whoever is sending out the new packet because we get more detail, it's much more legible. And I just want to thank whoever on the city changed this a couple of weeks ago, and they should be commended for much better, in my mind, much better for me. That's all.
Result of our new software that you all agreed to give us.
Very good. Moving on to our, I just lost my agenda. Moving on to our regular agenda items, first item is Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage Final PUD. We will, we do have a public hearing scheduled for this, this evening. We will have Donovan give a presentation. We will hear from the applicant if there's anything that the applicant would like to add. We will then open the public hearing and then bring back to council for consideration and any discussion. With that, Donovan, you want to kick us off?
Certainly. Mayor, Members of Council, like to present the final P Plan Unit Development Review for the Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage Project. This is something that council has seen before, and it, this project did receive preliminary PUD, New Development Approval on July 22. This also received a recommendation of Plan Commission Approval for the final PUD on August 12. The project, just to refresh your memories, is located on the west side of Everton here, and it's currently vacant parcel. This is north of 220th Street or 11th Avenue Southwest and west of the highway. The, the site plan shows a, that the, the site has, you know, is predominantly wetlands. You can see that here. There's some wetland replacement proposed. 324 units of self-storage are proposed with drive lanes that are adequately sized to allow for, you know, emergency vehicle access as well as three fire hydrants within it. This went through extensive Plan Commission review regarding it. And it really came, I think, came around to a much better project. And I believe that there's, most of the residents, you know, concerns are, were addressed. This also was a subject of a CUP request review last Wednesday before the Plan Commission. And Dick Biagini, the owner, who's also here on our call, requested addition, one additional opening, operating hour to open one hour earlier at 7:00 AM rather than 8:00 AM as part of that original approval for the CUP. Plan Commission did approve that. And so, and tonight, this is essentially the same project that City Council did a review in July. A grain permit was issued for this project, and they're removing trees, beginning preliminary grading, and actually installing a silk fence today. And the, the city recommend, city staff recommendation is for approval with six, six conditions that relate to the approval of the Met Council Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which it will receive its committee review on October 5 with an expected, then it'll go to the consent agenda on the full board in mid-October. And then, but that's still, you know, pending Met Council review and approval. And then the other conditions relate to city engineer and fire chief concerns being met and building permits being issued and development agreement and city financials being, so required financials being submitted. So at this point, I'd like, have you taken questions from council?
There any initial, initial questions from council? Not seeing any at this point. Is there any comments that Mr. Biagini, would you like to make any presentation or any comments you would like to make tonight?
No, I'm, I'm fine. I did talk about it in the day, and I've reviewed the staff report, and I'm very comfortable with it.
Very good. Thank you for being here. Let's, let's move to the open, let's move to the public hearing. And we're going to go, go through a couple of steps. Donovan and Karen, help me, were there submitted written comments that need to be read into the public record on this?
Yes, I received one. Karen, did you receive any?
I didn't receive any.
So with, with that, let's, at 7:24 PM, let's open the public hearing. Let's start with any written comments that have been received by staff, and then we will open it up for anybody who may be attending via the Zoom meeting, as well as anybody who may be attending in person in city council chambers. With that, I'll open the public hearing. And Donovan, do you want to read the first one into record?
Certainly. This was received by email today. To the Honorable Mayor and City Council of Forest Lake, I'm writing in regard to the proposed self-storage project set for 220th. Please consider the following. And there are headings for each of these following paragraphs. Improper usage of land. While city code allows self-storage as a conditional use for the B2 Highway Business District, I believe it's a lackluster use of land. Self-storage does not, does very little to add to our tax base. It creates very few jobs, and it produces minimal revenue for the city. In short, other than helping people store more stuff, it does not help or improve our community. It is a poor use of prime real estate. Against regional trends, the Twin Cities have seen an influx of, of applications for self-storage. Many communities have placed moratoriums and changed zoning codes to not let such uses in their business highway districts for the same reasons previously listed. They add little financial incentive for the community and city. They create few jobs, and plus, they can become an eyesore outside of storage items and lack of maintenance. In parentheses, few examples of cities that have placed moratoriums on self-storage include city of Blaine, city of Bloomington, city of Coon Rapids, city of Isanty, city of New Hope. Environmental impact. The property is composed mostly of U.S. Fish and Wildlife National Wetlands Inventory Designated Wetlands. While the applicant is required to replace the wetlands that will be impacted, I am still concerned about its environmental impact. As of September 11, 2020, many trees were cleared, soil has been disturbed, and heavy equipment was/ is driving everywhere. No visible signs of erosion control were present as of 9:00 AM on September 14 today. This causes the following concerns. One, sediment could be traveling where it's not supposed to. Two, lack of oversight on the project. And three, precedent this is setting for future projects near wetlands. Negative impacts on area. This project will negatively impact the adjacent residential properties. This neighborhood isn't an old, rundown part of town. This is a well-maintained, highly valued and desired neighborhood. The amount of taxes received from the mini storage will not outweigh the loss in value placed on the neighborhood. The plans for a sizable buffer between the facilities and the property line. My concern is that the loss of trees has already and will negatively affect the enjoyment of the residential areas more so. It does not leave enough of a buffer between the storage and the residential area. This paired with the late operation hours of the self-storage, people who once enjoyed a reasonably quiet evening at home could be subject to annoyances. Final thoughts. It may not feel this way now, but we do not have limitless commercial space in Forest Lake. As our city continues to build out, we need to be incredibly vigilant about what we allow built. We need to use every acre extremely carefully. It is essential for the mayor, city council, and city staff. Keep this in mind when making these decisions and drafting zoning code. That being said, self-storage is an inappropriate use for this property that will create more nuisances than benefits for the community. Sincerely, Matt Lindholm, City of Forest Lake.
Thank you, Donovan. And that was the only submitted comment, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. Is there anybody else that would, would like to, that is attending the Zoom meeting this evening, would like to make comment? And if you would, if you could, raise your hand in the Zoom window below to be recognized. And Mr. Biagini, hold on just a moment. We'll, we'll pull you back in after, after public hearing. I'm not seeing anybody that wishes to be recognized. Oh, Jim, Jim Litticoat and Karen, could you promote him into the meeting, please?
Should be in.
And Jim, I believe you're with us. It looks like you are, and you are now off mute. And my apologies if I, hello.
Hi, I'm actually Emily Litticoat. I, Jim is here with me as well. I'm his wife. So we, we live in the cul-de-sac that backs up to this property, and I just wanted to call your attention to the plans that they have on the west end of the property, leaving existing woods, and then having a screened fence, and that was going to be the buffer for our side. And I wanted to bring my camera outside and show you that there actually are not any trees there. So I just, I want to bring that to everyone's attention that, you know, I think you're being misled here. you know, I think you're being misled here that there actually are not trees for a buffer for us. So I'm hoping the internet will hold on for us, but really quickly I will just show you because the trees had been taken down. So let's see if this will work.
It's working.
Okay.
We may never go back to in-person meetings again.
Right. Okay, so here is the lot line. And as you can see, there's nothing. So that's our neighbor's bee nest and those are his trees. So no trees from the mini-storage unit land. So that was all I wanted to share, just to bring your attention to the situation that's going on here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Much appreciated. I see a couple of other panelists or attendees in our meeting. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in the public hearing this evening? And if so, you can raise your hand in the chat window or just jump in if you're able to jump in. I'm not seeing anybody indicating they want to participate.
I do have some.
Sharon. Yep. Promote Sharon into the meeting.
Yep. She should be in.
Sharon, it looks like you're in and you're off mute now. Thank you for joining us. Welcome.
I just wanted to go, I live two houses down from Emily and Jim in the cul-de-sac on the west side. And I'm going to go off of what she was saying that more trees were taken down. And then I want to reference one of the letters in the agenda that I think Dick wrote. The May 1st letter saying they want to shorten the setback. Looks like that's what they did because a lot of trees were taken out. And then also talking about how discussion with the neighboring property show for the most part, they don't want to opaque wood fence that would require upkeep. Now that they took out more trees, I would like a fence because more trees were taken than he led us to believe. So I'm all for that fence. I'm all for a barrier. I'm all for everything that I don't have to look at that storage unit, that it'll block lights that will shine into my windows, anything that'll block it. I am all for it now. I don't want to, I don't, I don't want a metal fence or anything. I would like it blocked since he took more trees than what he told us face to face. So if that could be changed or if that could go into effect, I would appreciate it. And that's all.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
And is there, I see one other attendee that hasn't yet spoken. And if you'd like to speak, you can indicate by raising your hand and we'll promote you into the meeting. Otherwise, you're welcome to observe as well. While we are giving a moment there, Donovan, is there anybody that's joined you in council chambers?
Uh, no, there is no one here to speak.
All right. Well, ask one more time. Is there anybody else that would like to speak as part of the public hearing this evening? And seeing none at 7:34, we'll close the public hearing and bring the conversation back to council. Council, and I believe Mr. Biagini, I think you had a question or if you get a comment that you wanted to make previously.
Yeah. I was at the site this morning and I did call Donovan. There was probably by 10:30 700 to 1,000 feet of silk fence installed. I don't know how the end of the day worked, but they were diligently going all the way around the site and I took photographs of it. So I don't know if the gentleman that was there right before they started, but there is a lot of silk fence. I don't know if Donovan got a chance to look at it, but regarding to the trees. We allowed on the drawings and everything we submitted 20 feet from the property line. As far as I know, that was staked by EG Root, which means we took down no more trees than what we stated on our drawing. If you go down to the far end where Linda Code is, they're very nice people, but there were no trees. So the trees get heavier going up to Sharon's place, which she asked for in the beginning. However, we're still putting in the privacy fence and we have still conceded to put in some nicer providing all the way across the back and around the corner to try to help the Linda Coats and Sharon and Craig that leave in the center. That's all I have.
Thank you. Donovan, can I have you share the site plan once again?
Certainly. I'll share with you that, that area there that was discussed in that public testimony. This is a site plan that shows a seven-foot tall screen fence on that west side. This would be where Sharon, Emily and Jim live over here on the, it's Ethan Circle, I believe is the street.
Left-hand side, the, is that the west side?
The west side, correct. So here's the 20-foot buffer of trees that remain that, that Dick referred to. Here's the seven-foot screen fence that's along here, the west side, and then all the way along here, it's about 180 plus feet, like probably 200 feet there. That's, that's the opaque screen fence. And then if we look at the landscaping plan, you'll see here the arborvitae that, that Dick referred to all on again. So this is, the fence is approximately here, the woods here. Here's the arborvitae. They'll be, it'll grow. And then also along that whole southwest corner again, about, you know, almost the full distance of that of that, that, that southwest corner. And then more here to kind of more of a screen elsewhere.
And that is both a fence as well as the arborvitae?
Correct. And as well as the tree, the 20-foot tree buffer.
How tall does the arborvitae grow?
Dick, can you answer that one?
Yeah, no, we're looking at two species. Some of them are 35-foot tall. Some of them get taller. The idea with the arborvitae is in discussion with Donovan was as woods deteriorate, whether it's north or west side, the arborvitae will grow together and get a nice height to screen everything. So that's kind of where we're, we're headed. I haven't picked the species out yet, but I'm working with the so we're the tree person to give us consultation on what we're doing there. The reason two things, the screening fence is also important for the deer. Our research found out that the deer population is pretty heavy. Jim Linderco told me that sometimes they come into his backyard and eat everything. So the fence will stop the deer from deteriorating or screening of the arborvitae. That's why it's inside the fence.
And to clarify, the arborvitae are to be planted. It's not existing, right?
Correct.
Part of the project plan.
Correct.
Council, other questions that you may have for the applicant or staff? Council member Hossneck.
So far apart are these arborvitae planted? I mean, does it really show there? I mean, it shows the plants there, but how far apart are they? Are we going to have a pretty solid buffer there, you know, when it's all said and done?
Yes. In, in conference with the arborvitae, he's going to, he wants to be in the 15-foot range because the bases get quite wide and he doesn't want to constrict them and kill each other. So he's talking plus or minus 15 feet all the way around on the diagram that you see.
I will, I will note, sorry, we heard in public comment tonight, the concerns about kind of this type of a property being used at this type of, at this location and just emphasize to council that we did actually hear community input or planning commission heard community input around, there were some community members that preferred this use rather than some of the other planned uses, whether that would be multifamily residential or some other types of use. So we have heard both, both components of from a land use perspective. Council, we do have a resolution in your packet for this evening. It's Resolution 09142004. And happy to entertain. Any further questions, discussion points on this item or a motion? Council member Bystrm.
You know, I'm, I'm generally in support of approval of the resolution. I'm a little bit concerned about this issue that we're hearing tonight about the, the arborvitae and the barrier because we did have a very lengthy discussion about that. I know at the last meeting. Is there, is there a, I know that there are kind of conditions attached to approval. Is, is there a way to attach an additional condition around kind of meeting certain parameters where this is concerned? I don't know if that's something that can be added at this point. I, I'm I'm having a little bit, little bit of a tough time with this one right now. Came in fully prepared, but after listening to our residents and thinking that some of these issues were or, or feeling confident that the issues were resolved, now I'm not as, quite as confident as I was. So I'm not sure if there's an opportunity to do some sort of contingency or, or condition attached to ensuring, you know, that that meets some certain standard or not. Maybe. Donovan, do you have any feedback on that? Any input?
Well, the, and the planning commission has reviewed this and they offer a recommendation. Though the, the zoning code gives city council full decision authority on this. And the resolution that's provided in your packet is, is there for your consideration and a potential motion. I'd like to comment though that, you know, this was something that, what, you know, went through pretty extensive review with the planning commission. And I'll say in my visit to the site, that 20-foot buffer on the west of tree buffer is not really of high-quality forest. I mean, it's not really thick undergrowth. The canopy is there, but a lot of it's pine trees. And it's not really thick woods. And I think what, what has happened is that now some of the residents have seen that it's not that thick, but it does meet the bill, the billing setbacks. And, you know, what, what's been proposed is, you know, is a screen fence, seven feet tall. This arborvitae that will, that will grow. And I think in some ways it, this is the, you know, a commercially zoned property that is adjacent to residential. And some of this does relate to, it's, it's a big change. When the woods have been there, people moved into the area thinking the woods would remain there. But that was never really part of any sort of permanent condition. It's been zoned, you know, it's commercial for a very long time and has remained vacant because there were many, I mean, there, there was a pretty well-defined project for that, a retail project that collapsed in the mid-aughts. Nothing was built. And in some ways, this is the inevitable result is that another owner would come in and, and redevelop its property. And I think Mayor Bain does, you know, correctly identify that. And this also somewhat relates to, you know, the other, the written comment that this is the sole remaining parcel that's highway business that is vacant. And the owner actually did, did consider high-density residential there, tried to make that work with, with a few concept plans. He didn't feel like that could work. So it is inevitable that self-storage goes there, but I believe it's inevitable that, you know, this project would be developed and through a long process, a reiterative process, something far past that May 1st letter, you know, narrative that Mr. Biagini submitted. The project has been slimmed down from, I think it was something around like 490 units, you know, back about a year ago to the, the current 324, this before you in this application. There are course conditions that like the city council could put on this. But it would be something in the lines of, you know, real dimensions as far as a greater tree buffer, you know, you know, a, I don't know if really a denser planting of arborvitae would make a difference. And I believe that there is going to be, you know, a transition here that nearby owners will have to accept that this is, this is change and but arborvitae, you know, if they grow to the height that, that Dick has mentioned, will do a lot to, to screen that. And the distances are really large. I mean, I could point out, I could bring the map back up. And it's, people are looking over a wetland, so they will see it, but the distances are in hundreds of feet for, for some of the property owners. And there is actually much closer proximity on the north side with residential, which we did, in our review, we heard more comments on that north side and we did, you know, did have, the final approval does include that 30-foot buffer. And, you know, and, and no doors, storage doors do face the west side. That's something that I think during that last planning commission meeting, I unfortunately didn't put enough care into, to point that out that some of the considerations we had for the north side weren't really present on the, the west side, you know, where the, the residents we spoke live. But I do feel like, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, care or mitigation to any noise or light impacts on that west side.
Council member Bystrm.
So I, I think what I'm hearing you say Donovan is that this, this, the, the information that we're receiving this evening is not a new, this, it's not a new issue. It's following the plans as they've been outlined to the planning commission and in previous meetings or previous presentations and meetings of council.
The, 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 the impacts aren't, aren't new. I mean, Sharon mentioning like the, the, the tree buffer there specifically and that, that with, you know, that's, that's, that's new, but it's been, it's been part of the plan since, you know, May, in June, and then received that approval in late June for the CUP. So that it's, it's not, that, that's not a new issue.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify and I think you did that for me. I'm just trying to clarify that the, the work that is happening there right now is the work, I, I know that the, you know, Mr. Biagini and his team did had, they did some extensive communication with, with the residents there. I mean, over the period of time to try to work to, you know, kind of reach some common ground around what was acceptable on the part of the residents and the, and what was needed for the development. I'm just, I'm just trying to assess, is this a new issue that we're having? Or, or is this, is the, is the plan moving forward as it was outlined on paper? So this is not, this is not a new, a new problem that we have at this point. This is the way that it, it has been outlined and presented to both planning commission and council over time.
Yeah, I haven't been out today to see the, the actual, on that west side of the property, you know, that actual tree, the trees that remain. But it's, but the, but the planning commission did receive other comments and did direct, definitely direct their discussion to a greater buffer on that west side, just create a distance, units were removed. And so that's, that's not a new issue.
Mr. Biagini.
Yeah, getting to the west side.
Yeah, getting to the west side. We did do a lot of conversation with all the neighbors involved, north, west, whatever. And the final communication I got was they were going to let the planning commission handle all the development and final decisions. I have emails to that, which I said, that's fine. That's exactly what I agreed to then. In the back west side, which the residents know, years ago, there was a road, it was kind of like a gardening road or whatever when the when the property owners had it. I don't know if they had a garden. So you've got trees coming off the houses. Then you got a 10-foot, nine-foot open area all the way down from Sharon's to to Jim's. And then you've got the trees again. And as Donovan said, when we moved forward to the 20 feet and we took buildings off the end of our development to try to do that, are they the nicest trees on the site? No, but that's what they asked, that I could save as many trees as I could. And what's going to happen, the reason the Arbor Vitae were brought into the development was partly Donovan. Because in my discussion with some of the homeowners and Donovan was, in the wintertime, we lose our leaves, those trees will slim down and you can't see them. And I I can tell you that, are they the best trees in town? No, but they are a buffer, and that's what everybody wanted. So we left them. That's the reason we're putting in the Arbor Vitae, because over time, if there is a disintegration of some of those trees, Arbor Vitae are meant to go up and protect the west side and coming down the south side to help Jim Lindicott's family. And it was well planned out, but that was all done like Donovan said back in June. We're not changing a thing from the planning commission. That's all.
Hopeful clarification. Thank you. Other council members, other questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion. And the resolution for this evening, I just had it in front of me and just lost the page number.
156, Mayor Bain.
Thank you. Resolution is available for you on 156.
Mayor Bain, I just I have a quick question for Donovan. Sorry, I was looking at the chat and I do we have, can you remind me, and I probably should know this, do we have some guidelines on, I realize we're in Minnesota, we want to take every ounce of sunlight possible for construction, but do we have some guidelines around that? I I see someone has something in the chat about there. They're still working out there right now. I'm just curious if we do we have certain quiet hours around that?
We do. And we, right now, the noise ordinance for the city is in effect, and it's 10:00 PM. But for the basic noises for construction activities, I believe it's seven. And once we move toward the construction of the facilities, they'll all be outlined in a development agreement and that also those hours will be stated. I would I would encourage anyone to, you know, to contact me or the police, and we can follow through on that if that indeed is occurring this late.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gerard, thank you.
Thank you. I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 09-14-20-04, approving the final planned unit development PUD for Minnesota Lake Self-Storage.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it and is to include the the recommendations from the staff.
Very good. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Hi.
Mayor Bain?
Hi. Motion approved. Our next item on the agenda this evening is 19824 July Avenue Minor Subdivision. And Donovan, this is also yours.
Thank you, Mayor Members of the Council. I'd like to present the minor subdivision application for 18425 July Avenue. This is currently a 20-acre parcel in the in the Agriculture Zoning District, way in the southeast corner of this of the city. I'll provide here a screen share to show you the location of the parcel. And give you a little more reference here on July Avenue. And what is proposed is to turn this into two conforming 10-acre lots, 10 acres being the minimum lot area for this for properties in this Agriculture Zoning District in this section of it. Currently, there is a house on that southern portion, and the northern portion is vacant, which makes it awfully convenient to carve off this this portion. Now, this this submitted site plan shows the the houses, you know, and outbuildings, as I mentioned, accessory structures. The applicant, Craig Coyle, who is also here on the on the call with us, is has put a kind of preliminary house site plan shown here. And this isn't required at this point. This would be part of the build building permit review. He just proposed to build a single-family home on the site, which is a permitted use for this property. And what you see here also, some proximate areas of the wetlands and the houses and driveways and any kind of buildings, you know, accessory structure is proposed to be meet the setbacks from that and not impacting the wetlands. Currently, this is a property that where there's not a platted road. And a condition that the city engineer put on city approval for this would be dedication of a 33-foot wide roadway and utility area, public utility area. And so that's shown roughly here in this diagonal line, I mean, dash line on that west side for the the total width of the the current parcel, which is approximately 600 feet and 300 feet is the minimum lot width. The planning commission did unanimously vote to recommend city council approval of this application at their August 26 meeting. And they held a public hearing, and there was no comment on that during that that public hearing. And at this point, this staff recommendation is to approve the minor subdivision of the existing lot at 18245, 18425 July Avenue into two legally conforming 10-acre lots with the conditions that there be a minor subdivision agreement executed, the applicant pay the applicable park dedication fee, and no building charter until this proper city, Washington County and Rice Street, Washington District permits are obtained. With this, I'd be happy to take any questions from council.
Thank you, Donovan. Council, any initial questions for Donovan before we hear from the applicant? Not seeing any. Mr. Coyle, thank you for being here. Is there anything else you would like to add or anything you'd like to present to council this evening?
I thanks for consideration, Mayor Bain and and council members. I think as Donovan had gone through the site plan, what we're proposing to do, you know, we've been residents of Forest Lake for 15 years now and just looking to get out and get a little bit more space for kids to grow. And so that's that's it.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any any questions either of the applicant or of staff this evening? And again, the resolution before us, 09142005, is in our packet on page 164.
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 09-14-20-05, a resolution approving a minor subdivision for PID 36.032.21.42.0001 with the conditions as outlined by zoning administrator Hart.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Hi.
Mayor Bain?
Hi. Motion's approved. Good luck with your project. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Council, next item on our agenda is body worn cameras. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and city council members, good evening. As you know, the Forest Lake Police Department intends to implement a body worn camera program. Minnesota law requires communities moving forward with a body worn camera program receive comments at three phases in the process. Number one was the introduction of body worn cameras to the city council and allow any comment and input from city council members. This was completed at the August 10 city council meeting. Secondly, we are allowing public comment and input from community members. To accomplish this, on August 24, the Body worn Camera Feedback Forum was posted on the city's website for public comment and input. The feedback forum will be posted through September 22, and we will be taking any comments and input from community members at this city council meeting as well. Last, we are to allow public comment and input from community members regarding the body worn camera policy. At this current meeting, we are also providing an opportunity for public comment and input regarding the body worn camera program along with the or the body worn camera program and the body worn camera policy. As of today, I've received one comment from the online feedback forum, which the individual commented that body worn cameras should be worn by our police officers in the program implemented by the police department. I've also received some positive comments from community members who I've come in contact with regarding the body worn camera program as well. Our intentions are to purchase the body worn cameras in late September or early October. A new model is being rolled out by Panasonic in a few weeks, so we plan on waiting for the new model to be released to ensure that we have the most up-to-date technology for our officers. The funds for the body worn cameras are available in this year's budget. And right now, I'd like to take the next few minutes or longer, if need be, to see if there are any questions or comments from community members, either online or if they had submitted them to the city in the past two weeks.
Very good. Thank you, chief. I will open it up. If there is anybody attending the remote meeting that would like to speak on this topic, please feel free to raise your hand to be recognized. And while we have that comment period open, has there been any email submissions other than what chief referenced on this topic? And no. And Donovan, is there anybody in person at City Hall on this topic? Donovan thought we were done with him for a while. I'm assuming since he's off camera, the answer is no. Um, and I'm still not seeing any comments. Chief Peterson, just for clarification, the comment period is open until, did you say September 22nd?
September 22nd, correct.
Okay. And at that point, is it come, does the policy come back to council for final adoption? Is that the plan?
It's actually a policy that we will adopt within the department. That might be a question for the city attorney. Pete might be able to help us out with that.
Your honor, members of council, Chief Peterson is correct. By statute, this policy is adopted by the chief.
Excellent.
Thanks for the clarification, Pete.
Thank you. And has there been any changes to the policy in its current form from what was previously presented to council?
There has not been. No changes.
And you don't need any official action for us tonight, other than holding this discussion?
Correct.
Thank you. I will open it up. Council, any further questions of chief on the policy? All right. Have we done any social media posts on this topic?
Other than what we've placed out in on the city website, I do not believe we've done any social media posts. I'd have to check on that again. I'm not sure. I apologize for not having that answered for you.
That's okay. Might be worth a might be worth a post on communication and referencing that to the site as well, just to make sure we've covered all of our bases.
Yep, we can definitely do that. And I'll have that posted tomorrow.
Terrific. Council, anything else before we move on to our next agenda item? Or chief, anything else you'd like council to consider?
Oh, I think that's it. That's all I have for you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is the City of Forest Lake CARES Act Business Grant Policy. And Dan, you are going to walk us through this.
Thanks, Mayor Members of the Council. I have the presentation ready to go for the CARES Act Business Grant Program. And I apologize to those who sat through the EDA meeting. This will be very similar to what was presented there, so a little bit duplication, but wanted to give council kind of a full background to the program and kind of give it a high-level look-through or go over what the program will entail. Just want to note that the EDA did recommend approval of this program to the city council. There was one small change that they recommended on the eligible expenses. They wanted moving expenses to be made eligible if it was a for-profit employer-based business that was moving locations due to a downsizing as a result of COVID-19. So other than that, there was no major changes from the EDA based on their conversation. Goals of tonight's discussion, like I said before, I kind of want to walk through the program details, give a high-level overview of the program. Also want to walk the council through what the application process will look like. I give a brief timeline of that and then open it up for conversation, a feedback discussion or feedback discussion on the policy. Ultimately, I'm looking for approval of the program policy so we can start getting this grant program rolled out to the business community. The CARES Act Business Grant Program, the CARES Act does authorize the issue issuance of business assistance grants. The funding for this is to come from the CARES Act allocation. The budget amendment that was approved as a as part of the consent agenda did allocate $300,000 for this program. On the policy that's before you today is one that is modeled after other city and county programs. This is not one that I drafted out of whole cloth. I did do a lot of research into what other cities and counties are doing for their CARES Act Business Grant Programs and modeled and use those as the base for this particular policy. This is also designed to complement other existing programs. This is not designed to compete with, say, a county program or a state program or a federal program. This is more designed to complement those and give businesses the most access to capital as they can to help them cope with the COVID-19 pandemic. Grant overview, right now, it's a $300,000 has been approved based on the budget amendments approved earlier tonight as part of the consent agenda. So a total of $300,000 is allocated for this program. Priority funding, the way this policy is drafted, is for for-profit businesses and self-employed or home-based businesses on a first-come, first-served basis. Nonprofits are also eligible after the for-profit and self-employed home-based businesses have been reviewed and approved. So basically, one way to think of this is that we have two buckets of money. The first bucket is to be used for for-profit. Whatever is left in that bucket after we've gone through all those applications, that'll then get transferred into the nonprofit bucket, and then those nonprofit applications will be approved with the funds that are remaining. For total grant amounts, if you're a for-profit business with employees, you can apply for a grant of up to $15,000. If you're self-employed or a non-employer-based, home-based business, you can apply for grant program up to $7,500, and nonprofits will be eligible for grants up to $15,000. Who can apply? This is just a summary of, there's more detail in the actual policy, but this is Who can apply? This is just a summary of, there's more detail in the actual policy, but this is a high-level overview. The business would need to be in business by January 1st of 2020. The reason why that date was selected was that we needed to establish a benchmark for revenues prior to the COVID impact, so we can show that there actually has been a demonstrated loss of revenue or reduction in revenue as a result of COVID. So by having January, that's a pretty short window, but it does allow us to prove a three-month, give a three-month of normal operations before COVID-19 impact can be seen on the applicant books. For employer-based businesses, they need to have at least one employee, but no more than 50 FTE, full-time equivalent employees at the location address. They also must have a physical presence within the city of Forest Lake, and they must have earned under $5 million in annual revenue, and they cannot be delinquent on taxes, bills, or charges due to the city from February 1st, 2020 or prior. A lot of these who can apply criteria does track with the same criteria that Washington County is using, so we did mirror a lot of what their application criteria is. Based on their second round, they had a first round that was a little more restrictive. They sent relaxed standards, and we do right now are lining up really well with the relaxed standards at the county level as well. Eligible business types, if you're a corporate chain or a multi-state chain, you are ineligible for this grant. However, if you're a local franchisee, owner of a corporate chain or multi-state chain, you know, if you own a local franchise, you would be eligible to apply. If you're in default prior to February 29th, you're not eligible. Also, businesses that derive income from gambling or primarily sell pawn merchandise or guns would not be able to apply. And finally, businesses that derive income from passive investments, real estate transactions, property rentals, or property management, and billboards or lobbying would not be able to apply as well. On the nonprofit side, who can apply? If you've been in business or been established as of January 1st, 2020, you'd be eligible. Be registered at either a 501(c)(3), 501(c)(6), or 501(c)(19) organization. These classifications allow for veterans organizations, business organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, and traditional 501(c)(3) to apply for this grant. Those to apply can have no more than 50 full-time equivalent employees at the location, must also have a physical address within the city of Forest Lake, and must not have any delinquent bills or charges due to the city of Forest Lake from February 1st, 2020 or prior. Eligibility, what kind of overarching to all of this eligibility is that the business or the nonprofit does need to demonstrate an impact of COVID-19. If the business was shut down due to governor's orders, that's pretty easy to prove that they're going to have a COVID-19 impact since they would not have been able to collect revenues during the shutdown period. Another way to demonstrate the need is to take a look at year-over-year revenues. So if a business has been in business for multiple years, they could take a look at, what were the revenues through August of 2019, and then compare that to what revenues were through August of 2020 to show that reduction, because we're trying to establish the fact that they have had a revenue reduction or an impact operation due to COVID. For those businesses that maybe relatively may not have a year, have not been in business for a full year, we can also look at monthly revenue reduction since COVID-19. Here again goes back to the January 1st, so using January, February, and March to establish baseline revenues, and then take a look at what the revenues are post-March, and April, May, and June, for example, to show that reduction in revenues. Again, these eligibility criteria, if they're not able to demonstrate an impact, they would not be eligible because we do need to demonstrate that they have been impacted as a result of COVID-19. So what can the money be used for? The purpose of this grant program is to establish or give businesses working capital, is to keep them, to give them capital to operate their business. This capital can be used for operating expenses such as rent payments, mortgage payments, utilities. They cannot, however, be used to pay property tax payments or pay municipal utility bills. So if they have a water and sewer bill, those bills would not be eligible under the grant, nor would paying their property tax payments using grant funds. But if they were to pay a gas bill or a water bill, those would be eligible reimbursable expenses. They can also use it to pay fixed debts, payroll costs, account payables, inventory costs. Also, if they've had reopening expenses, so if a business was shut down due to COVID-19 and they go through a reopening, but they've had to purchase PPE for their staff, do some facility cleaning, redesign their workspace to make distancing requirements, those reopening expenses would be grant reimbursable or grant eligible. Also, technology capital expenses, marketing tools and assistance would also be eligible. One caveat here is that both technology capital expenses and marketing tools and assistance only apply for the for-profit. Those do not apply for the nonprofits, given the fact that we don't want to be in a position of promoting a particular religion or service organization, marketing of that group. So those funds or those expenses only be on the for-profit side. Also, on the expense side, as a general, one thing to keep in mind as well is that if the business has applied for, say, another grant opportunity, so say, the business applied for the Paycheck Protection Program to use that to pay for payroll costs, they could not apply for the city's grant program to have those same payroll costs covered by the city grant program. So they're not allowed to double-dip. So they're not allowed to cover, say, their may payroll cost covered by the Paycheck Protection Program. They could not cover may payroll costs using a city grant program. So they can still apply for the city grant program, they just have to put expenses there that were not covered by another grant program. So on the application timeline, we are on a rather condensed timeframe, and this timeline is driven by the fact that the city does need to expend its CARES Act expenses by that November 15th deadline, which puts this grant program at a pretty, you know, it's on light speed at this point to get the application open and reviewed. We do have it scheduled right now to go live on September 16th, which will be this Wednesday. It'll be open for two weeks, so closes on September 30th. The reviews will officially start once applications come in, but the week of October 1st to the 9th will follow through with all the applications that came in, make sure that they're able to supply all of the supporting documentation that we have that are required. So if we ever do get audited, we do have all of the backup materials that the auditors would require, that we actually did give this money out to cover actual expenses and not anticipated expenses. Once the review period is completed, they'll go through on October 12th, for EDA approval. We'll then release our grant agreements to those businesses and nonprofits that have been approved. They'll all come back, and on October 26th, we'll release the grant funding as part of a check run, which will take place on October 26th. So as you can see here, we have a pretty tight condensed timeframe, but it's one that I believe is workable based on the requirements of the grant program. How to apply? So I have this set up right now through the city's, through an application portal that I use using Laserfish. And I'll just give a quick overview of what the application process looks like. Make sure I got the right page here. Is everybody seeing the application page? So what you see here, this is the application that the businesses will see. It's tabbed at the top here, Grant Overview, Eligible Criteria or Eligibility Guidelines, Business Information. One difference, that when this application does actually go live, some of these forms won't be seen. These forms will show up based on answers to questions. So for example, if you're a small business with employees, you won't see, we'll type a nonprofit organization. This initial application will actually start to do the initial sort for us. It'll actually say which ones, you know, if, say, they're a nonprofit organization that's not one of these three categories, they'll receive an email saying your grant has been, application has been received. However, it does not meet criteria based on, and it'll input the criteria as to why it doesn't meet our eligibility criteria. The business can then, you know, will be known, you know, have an idea as to why the application was not accepted by the city. And then they can also contact me for further questions or further answers if they have any further follow-up questions for that. So some of that initial sort will happen at the application level. And then you just see here some additional information that's required from the businesses. Once the application is submitted to the city, I will reach out to them to make sure they supply all of the required backup documentation as well. So this is step one. We'll reach out till we have the complete follow-up documentation after that initial review. And then we'll make sure that all of the required documentation is is available prior to it being brought forward to the EDA for final review. So at this point, the discussion points, you know, that was the EDA discussed as well. They didn't have any major changes to these three, but just wanted to have counsel the opportunity to weigh in on these. First, is counsel comfortable with the grant amounts that are presented? Second, is counsel comfortable with the nonprofit funding, how that's laid out within the current policy? And then finally, the public outreach. There was a pretty robust discussion at the EDA level of how to handle public outreach. They talked about potentially doing a mailer as well as reaching out directly to businesses as part of the newly launched Business Retention and Expansion Program, making those businesses aware that this grant opportunity is there. Just as to kind of help guide that, kind of the overall grant amount conversation, is when I looked at other programs, I think the original thought from a lot of cities and counties that launched these programs, they sort of envisioned that there'd be a mad dash for businesses to sign up for these, that they'd be basically beating down the door for applications. And basically, across the board, that has not been the case. A lot of businesses aren't, that line is not, you know, there when the program launches. However, down the road, it's basically you try to like, kind of coax the applicants in and get them into this program. I was a part of a business call this afternoon, and one of the reasons they were saying is that there's so much information regarding these programs that are out there right now, that they're having trouble figuring out where to apply, how to apply. There's some confusion out there, and that was one of the reasons that the EDA had that discussion on the public outreach, that we want to make sure that we have the business community here be aware of that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has regarding this with the CARES Act Business Subsidy Program.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel, questions for Dan?
Mayor Bain, I have a quick question. Dan, I don't know if you can go back to this slide, I think I missed it, but I just wanted to double-check. It was the three things that the business had to be, it was deemed nonessential by the governor and so closed during COVID. It was also having to show revenue loss. Is it, they have to meet all of those or certain ones? And I asked that because childcare in Minnesota was deemed essential, yet there's a huge loss of revenue because obviously many families pulled their kids, and that's family, really affecting our family childcare. And I just, I bring that up because that is such a, you know, kind of the crux of our, if we don't have childcare, we don't have people going to work. And so I'm just asking if they are eligible, if they aren't, there were grants available by the state, but not necessarily everyone received them. And so you might get some questions on that, I'm thinking. So that's why I bring it up.
And that's a great question. So they do not need to meet all of those criteria? And one of the reasons why the governor's shutdown of government orders was there is that that's a pretty easy way to show revenue loss, that if you're open on, you know, March 15th, and then closed for two weeks afterwards, you're going to have a loss of revenue for those two weeks you're closed. They just, so those day cares would just need to show a reduction in revenue and impact of COVID, and those expense that they had would be eligible for the grant.
Okay, because I can email you after, because I'm just thinking, you listed if they received assistance. A lot of our family providers in the state of Minnesota were not eligible for any of the deed grants or PPP grants the way their business is set up. And so, but again, some were eligible for grants through another agency by the state, and so I don't know if you need to list. I don't know if that's something that you need to look at further or not. But the Department of Human Services did award grants, again, not to all, to some. And I don't know if that's just something to consider.
And for that example, I would just need to verify, or they would need to verify that those expenses that they're asking for reimbursement through this grant have not been reimbursed through another grant. So for example, if they got reimbursed for, you know, they did food purchasing through a deed grant or a state grant, but they're asking for utilities, for electric utilities on our grant, those would be reimbursable.
Okay.
They couldn't ask for food for both of them for the same, they basically can't get paid twice. Yeah, they can't double them.
Okay. And I asked because I have a feeling you're going to get some questions on that.
I think, so, and I think that's a crossover. I think that's kind of a universal question, that even by segment, and so if there were expenses that were reimbursed up to a certain amount by another program, but then they have excess that's still unreimbursed, they are eligible to apply for those types of excess, even if it's in the same category, they just can't get reimbursed for the same dollar.
Correct. And they also have to prove that they actually have made, expended the money. They can't just say, I have an anticipated expense of $10,000. They actually have to show that they've spent the money, either through a receipt, you know, fully paid invoice, cancel check. They have to show documentation that they actually spent the money, not just an anticipated expense. So, you know, one thing I told the EDA, it's almost like a look back versus a look forward. So it's like, at this point, it's expenses that they've already done to date versus anticipated expenses, unless they can get those expenses proof of payment before the grant gets dispersed to them.
Counsel member Beistrom?
I have one clarification, and I know you said businesses. In the statement specifically was that derive income from gambling. A lot of nonprofits do receive some income from charitable gambling, pull tabs and those sorts of things. So is that exempt? I mean, or do they not, would they not qualify if they were bringing in? Because I know they lost a lot of revenue when everything shut down from their pull tabs as well, from their charitable gambling as well. So just, I think that's a question that will come up as well.
And the way it's currently written is that both for-profit and nonprofit, if they derive revenue from gambling, they would not be eligible for the grant. That's the way it's currently drafted.
Okay. That one I might consider.
Dan, is there, so if they, go ahead, counsel member Gerard.
I'm curious, Dan, on segregation between profit and nonprofit. You know, you end up with something like the Legion and VFW, which took a severe hit for a number of months, and they're to a large extent just as vital as some of the other businesses. And I'm just wondering why you put for-profit ahead of nonprofit?
Great question. And the reason why that's there is that if you look at the way most other municipalities and counties have approached this, primarily, a lot of them, the intent of this was to get the for-profit shored up first, and then whatever was left. You're starting to see sort of the second, third round, they kind of realize, I have excess funds, let's get the nonprofits brought in. But given the fact that we have a fairly condensed timeframe here, we don't really have time to go back through and say, you know, the luxury of coming back in September and saying, let's do a nonprofit, or, excuse me, in October, saying that's to add nonprofit capability to that. But to your point, right now, I mean, the veterans groups are, they're classified as a 501(c)(19), so they're a, you know, qualified nonprofit veterans group. The way it's currently drafted, they would be in on that second tier after the for-profits have been taken care of. And that's just tracking with the way most other cities have drafted their grant programs, their business assistance programs.
Thank you.
And clarification also included in that nonprofit category, so it'd be Legion, VFW, but then also the Chamber as an organization would also potentially qualify, correct, Dan?
That is correct, and traditional 501(c)(3) groups as well. So that those additional classifications allow for the veterans groups and the Chamber to be eligible for the grant, assuming that there's grant funds available at the end of the grant period. You know, again, that's the way it's currently drafted.
Although I believe a lot of them also derive revenue from charitable gambling funds. Veterans groups, I believe. So they're probably, that probably would automatically make them ineligible.
Yeah, I don't know the funding mechanisms of, I mean, I didn't reach out to them directly to find out where their funding streams were. You know, I just tried to, you know, get the nonprofits include, you know, it was tougher to find nonprofit. You know, I just tried to, you know, get the nonprofits include, you know, it was, it was tougher to find nonprofit criteria since there's not as much of it out there. I mean, there's lots of the for-profits, nonprofit is a little bit tougher to unearth. So I don't know, you know, what percentage of income they get from their gambling revenues.
Do we, are we excluding? I understand the public policy of excluding the reimbursement for gambling as part of this CARES Act funding. I appreciate, I understand that. But is there a way that we can differentiate between, just because the organization themselves, you know, take Forest Lake Lions Club, for example, they have all sorts of revenue streams, one of them happens to be gambling. Is there a way that we could provide grant assistance for non-gambling, non-gambling proceeds or something that excludes, that we're not reimbursing for the lack of gambling, but that we are recognizing that they do have real COVID, you know, they haven't had other fundraisers and other activities that would provide other revenue streams? Is there a way we can differentiate that rather than excluding them, you know, carte blanche?
I, I think there could be if you went through and, and just basically took the gambling revenues out of the reduction equation. So let's, you know, because obviously with pull tabs being out, you know, nobody in, you know, bars doing pull tabs for two months, there's revenue reduction there. They'd have to show a reduction in revenues outside of that, you know, so they wouldn't, so they wouldn't be able to apply for that. So I mean, it could be tweaks to say, you know, on the for-profit side, leave the gambling revenues there. So you're not, you know, you're not supporting casinos, for example, not that we haven't enforced, like. But on the nonprofit side, you could just say, you know, gambling expenses, you know, you could carve that out where it's not a, a factor on the revenue side. So they would still potentially, they would still be eligible if they have reductions in revenues outside of gambling revenues.
I, I personally, I personally support that idea. Because I think a lot of them were hit hard, and I think they do have expenses outside of, you know, what the revenue they generate from those, from charitable gambling covers. So you'd have to pull away any, any, you know, PPE or PPP expenses. Too many Ps over the last few months here. PPP expenses and, you know, those charitable gambling expenses and have them demonstrate, you know, losses outside of probably those two buckets, basically.
Correct. Yeah, it'd have to come from, like you said, using a lion club as an example, with multiple revenue streams. But other revenue streams would have to be used to justify the expenses or justify the reduction.
Right.
Not the charitable gambling ones. Or, like you said, if they also had received funding for other, you know, from other grants. However, on the nonprofit side, there's not as many fund, grant programs that are available to nonprofits. I don't see a lot of, as much conflict there as they would on the for-profit side.
And, and I think also to, to Mayor Bain's point, a lot of these entities lost revenue because of the fact that they couldn't hold fundraising events, you know. So, so I think we, I think we need to, we need to work with that a little bit, you know, just so we aren't too rigid in our exclusion. I mean, I, I completely understand the, the, the purpose and the point. But I'd like to, I'd like to see some flexibility there or some parameters outlined that would maybe open a door for some of them that I know are really struggling as a result of this as well.
So we, we have, so we have the, the original plan as presented in our packet. We have the proposed amendment from the EDA or the recommended amendment from the EDA, which would allow moving expenses for non-home-based businesses. The goal, the goal there being that if you had moving expenses from a commercial property to, from one commercial property to another commercial property, either downsizing of office space or downsizing of retail space, we wanted to support that. We were not going to support the moving expenses related to a home-based business. So that would be, continue to be excluded. And then on another proposed amendment related to exclusion of charitable gambling-related revenues and expenses within a program, but not for the entire organization. Other feedback items, council would like to consider, and I, I push us towards conclusion here just because Dan has some work to do on finalizing applications. If we're going to have an application period open up here by Wednesday, so we can have funds dispersed by the end of October. We have a, a short amount of time to do a fair amount of administrative work. Any other questions or questions or suggestions? I do think it is important, we approve a program, however, it is important to keep these dollars here in Forest Lake to the, to the extent that we are able to keep these dollars here in Forest Lake, both for-profit and nonprofit. So with that, I would make, I would motion that we approve the CARES Act Grant Program with those two amendments and would instruct staff to work on updating materials to reflect those two amendments.
A second.
Motion and a second. And Diana, do you have sufficient clarity on the two proposed amendments?
I do, yes.
Terrific. Any further questions or comments, discussion? Seeing none, Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. And motion approved. Next item on the agenda this evening is the 2021 Preliminary Property Tax Levy and Budget. And I believe Sandy is walking us through this this evening.
Sure, I can do that. And this is as a result of the meetings that we've had, the last three meetings we've had regarding the budget as well as the levy. And what this resolution is a requirement by state statute to have this completed by the 30th of this month. So therefore, that's why we're bringing the resolution for you today. So we have time to provide that to the Washington County as well as to the state as a requirement. This is approving the preliminary 2021 property tax and preliminary 2021 budgets as well as setting the public hearing date for the 2021 budget and property tax levy. So, so this is a preliminary, meaning that we're going to be having a final decision come December, when we have to pass the final. But what was discussed and, and at the last few meetings was that the 2021 levy in total would come to 11,484,799 with an increase of 632,838 at a 5.83% increase. And we did provide a copy of the preliminary budgets that was provided to the council at the last meeting, the last budget meeting on the 31st. And what we are proposing is that the public hearing be held December 14th, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. So with that, this resolution is recommended for council for approval.
Thank you, Sandy. I know we've had a lot of previous discussions on this topic. However, it is an, an, an important item. Important to note that tonight we set the preliminary levy, this is just preliminary levy. Number can come down from this, but cannot get larger between now and final approval in December. Council, as you've had additional time with this, with the budget packet, any additional questions, comments? And we have the resolution 09142006 is on page 179 of your packet. Councilmember Beistrum.
I think my only unanswered question has to do with the Forest Lake, Lake Association. I think last meeting, we had talked about circling back and having a meeting with them, trying to, trying to flesh out who's responsible for what with regard to the watershed and flood and where the city would integrate in there. And that's the only question I don't have an answer to. Otherwise, I'm prepared to support this.
Yeah, just to, to give you an update here, we, I met with Jerry last week to talk about what his budget was and how it worked and how the structure. And we need to continue those discussions after he's, he had to go out of town. And we'll talk to the watershed district later about how that's going to go and have a recommendation before the December approval is requested by the council.
But we can't increase budget at that time. So are we?
I want to be clear, you can increase the budget, you can't increase the levy.
The levy.
Only the levy that's frozen. So if we make an adjustment within the general fund, up, down, backwards or forwards, we can do that, but we can't do that with the levy. So there's still ability to, to, to move around a little bit.
Yeah, and that's what I meant. So, okay.
Also, I think part of, part of that discussion too is also the use of surface water management fund, the surface water management fund, which is general fund neutral. I'm not sure it's all going to fit there, but that is part of, I think, what's also on the table for the fourth quarter here in discussion. Other questions? Questions about budget? I am also looking forward to doing a little bit of additional discovery in the enterprise funds. Just making sure that, just kind of doing, doing the walkthrough. It's not impactful to the general fund, but continuing those discussions as well.
And again, some of that will come when we get the tenure plan presented to the council, hopefully within the next 30 to 45 days.
Council, any other, any other questions? Or entertain a motion? Same, Councilmember Husnick.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution, excuse me, number 09-14-20-06, the resolution approving the 2021 Preliminary Property Tax Levy and a preliminary 2021 budget and setting a public hearing date for the 2021 budget and property tax levy.
A second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. And motion approves, approved. That concludes our, our regular agenda this evening. We do have a closed session tonight, but we will do staff updates, council updates, and then we'll move into closed session. So let's start with staff updates. We'll start with Patrick and then move on to Dan. Oh, Patrick, you are on mute.
Okay, there we are. Just to mention, I already mentioned that we met with Jerry regarding the Lake Association and, and are making some progress in there. And we'll need to talk to the watershed district. And speaking of the watershed district, we do have a joint meeting with the watershed district. I believe it's next Monday, a workshop to discuss what they believe are important, they're doing some planning and things. And so that's a joint session, work session with the council. And I also met last week with Ellers and Associates to talk about the tenure plan. And we're continuing to make some adjustments there and crawling closer and closer to being able to present to the city council with something there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions for Patrick? Seeing, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Gerard.
Patrick, you mentioned a watershed meeting. Did, did you guys work out a timeframe? They were, I attended their last meeting, and they were looking for a couple of hours?
Yeah, we've been, we gave them the date months ago. When that was, we gave them a September date, at least a month ago, telling them what it was, that it's joint workshop and outlining what they want. So they, they knew what we, what, what the date was and what the timeframe was. So I think, and we got today, we received today a, an outline of their presentation, so they should be all set.
Thank you.
Very good. Let's, Dan next, and Chief Peterson after Dan.
I just want to provide a brief update on council chambers. So the upgrades, the tech upgrades that are needed to do the both remote and in-person meetings are scheduled to be installed starting this Wednesday. So hopefully by the end of the week, chambers will be ready to, will we get to the point where if you want to do in-person and remote meetings, they'll be set up hopefully by the end of this week? So that, that is scheduled to take place Wednesday and Thursday. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have of me.
Any questions for Dan? All right, Chief Peterson and Chief Newman after.
The only item I have for you tonight is to thank Captain Greg Weiss, Detective Nancy Carlson, Assistant City Administrator Dan Undom for their work the past few hours in organizing the public notification that will continue through the next couple of days. We were placed in a very difficult position with the last minute notification by the Minnesota Department of Corrections. But I believe we have a good plan in place in order to thoroughly notify the public with the timeframe given to us. Other than that, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief Peterson? All right, how, um, Speed Trailer is, I know at one time, I think the Speed Trailer was maybe out of commission, is it back up?
It has been up and running for the last few weeks. The parts came in, it took a while. So yeah, we're continuing, putting, putting it out when we can, when weather permits, of course. But I'm hoping that we can still get it out there in the next couple of months before, for the cold weather hits.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, Chief Newman, and we'll do Donovan after Chief Newman.
Mayor members of the council, I have no updates tonight unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Chief Newman? All right, and Donovan and Ryan after Donovan. Donovan, are you still with us? You're on mute if you're talking. We'll move on from, we'll move on from Donovan. I did get another complaint from a resident today on Jensen Avenue again. So at some point, I know that we've had ongoing code enforcement challenges at, at that property. And so an update at some point would be good. And I suspect there's some additional activity there. Well, Ryan, and then Pete after Ryan. Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor City Council, not much thoroughly reports, a lot of small things moving forward, local street project. We just got one little neighborhood base course left. Obviously, the roundabout's open, a lot of site development projects are coming to an end and closing up, getting closure with Rice Creek Barish District or Comfort Lake. Next city council meeting, we will come forward and request authorized plans and specs for the 2021 local street project because we just got some survey work to do for that project, and we want to make sure that gets done before any snowfall. So that's basically why we want to come for approval on that. The water treatment plant, one and three, I would say is about 70% done. So come into November is really what our target date for the end of that construction, which then will lead into, you know, your water treatment plant, two rehab project forbids and stuff like that. So it's a lot of things going on, a lot of stuff with CIP, you know, future planning. And then just working with Mindot and the county and the other two local projects that are coming down the pipeline in future years.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan this evening? Ryan, thank you for reaching out proactively to the school district about communication with students on using the flashing beacon system. I know you provided them with some materials, and there was maybe some discussion on having the cable or LATV do a video, whatever we can do around communication of that, I think is important, especially while we've got students back to school and excited and engaged.
Yeah, just to expand on Mayor Bain's comments there, for those that don't know, what we observed early with the pedestrian traffic heading back to school is they were not using the devices. So we reached out instantly to the school to start some communication education, working with some videos and other handouts, and then the TV to do something with a drone to make it more interactive and, you know, for the, for them to want to watch. and, you know, for the, for them to want to watch it. So just trying to be proactive on that because, you know, that again is the first trunk highway in the state of Minnesota to have four RFP crossings added. So we want it utilized, so.
Agreed. Thank you for that. Any, any other questions for Ryan? Pete and Sandy after Pete's.
Your honor, members of council, I don't have a report for you this evening, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Pete this evening? All right, and Sandy, we'll do Karen after Sandy.
I have nothing. Yep, I have nothing more to add, but if there's any questions, I certainly can answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions for Sandy? Seeing none, and Karen, anything for council this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I don't have anything. If you have questions about anything, I'm happy to answer.
Very good. Any questions for Karen this evening? Seeing none, let's move on to council updates. And we'll start with councilmember Husnick and then councilmember Beistrum.
I came out of mayor. I attended the EDA meeting today as, just before the council meeting. Dan went over the stuff that we really covered tonight. It was a big thing, the CARE, the CARE Act. So there's no reason to expand on that. There was some talk about the business retention and that sort of thing too. And other than that, I attended the airport commission meeting, which occurred on the 3rd, I believe it was. And there we're just, you know, talking about the possibility of depending on funding, trying to make some space so we can build a couple more hangers out there. The demand is high and that sort of thing. So, and then we've got three empty lots out there that aren't being built on there and people are kind of sitting on them. So we're working on trying to get that to move forward. And a couple of other just housekeeping issues and that kind of thing. So that was about it. Other than that, I have no other updates. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Beistrum and we'll do councilmember Munson after councilmember Beistrum.
Just a quick report. Attended a senior center board meeting. Sharon is officially leaving the position on October 1st. Still working to try to get someone hired there. I think there are some challenges with COVID and just the times in, in that hiring process. And so contacted city administrator Casey and Jamie Weshay to attend a meeting to maybe discuss how we might more formally partner with the senior center moving forward. So hopefully we'll get that done on Friday. And then I just wanted to say thanks to the city staff for making this budget season relatively painless. I have a couple of other council colleagues that have stories to tell. And so it, you really lay things out well. And I just appreciate the attention to the strategic plan and, and really identifying those priorities and getting all of that work done ahead of time. I think it really went quite smoothly. So thank you for that. And then I just want to say to Ryan, the roundabout is awesome. So, yeah. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Munson.
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit to councilmember Beistrum's with the budget season. I remember a couple, few meetings back, councilmember Gerard said he couldn't imagine doing this virtually, but the staff made this painless. So thank you all to all of you. And then to Dan for your work on the, the business CARES Act funding for our businesses. It's great work. The only real update I have, we, actually, we were, had a Fenway advisory meeting, but it was canceled. But I was able to talk to Jamie and it sounds like we're getting closer to some language for an agreement with FLA moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. And councilmember Gerard.
Uh, thank you. And once you ask, I, I did live through the budget season, so, um, thank you Karen for making that possible. I did attend a watershed meeting and as we discussed earlier, they're very excited to come and meet with us next week. They just don't think there was enough time to cover all the topics they want to cover. So it ought to be a, a great meeting. Also attended the planning commission meeting last week and they had, well, we saw one of them tonight, this mini storage and subdivision. There was a variance that came up that was not approved, so we may see more of that later. But all in all, a kind of a long meeting, but they got their work done. We also met, the cable commission met. With all the fall sports canceled, they are a little bit looking for stuff to do, or at least we think they should be. So both Columbus and myself asked them to maybe put a community video together just promoting the community instead of an individual business. But hopefully they're working with Ryan and Dan on something for the roundabout. Cause I think, I think they have a little bit of time. So that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
That's great. Thank you. Um, just a couple of quick updates from me. Sam provided a great update on the EDA. And thank you to Dan for all of the work, both he's simultaneously doing the CARES Act grant program and then also the business retention and expansion program as well. And we approved, well, recommended for council approval at one and we approved the BNE program as well. So that's great. Um, I believe our emergency orders are extended into October. And Pete, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I, I'm contemplating what we do with this. And, and I'm, I'm struggling with, are we in, so we're certainly within a state of emergency from a state perspective, and what does that mean for us locally? And what do we go from here? And it's because I'm suspecting that things aren't going to change in the near term. I think what we are doing today is going to be probably in existence for the next six months. And so I think we've got this interesting question of, are we, do we continue to expand emergency orders? Or do we need to do other things to account for what needs to happen under our new normal? And so I think about things like our remote meetings and allowing for a hybrid type meeting. And I guess I would ask the question and get some, look for some feedback on, I don't want to not, I, I guess I'd like to find a way to do what we're doing under the emergency orders under something else that is our reflective of our new normal. Because again, we are going into a period where we've potentially been under emergency orders for six months. And are we prepared to be under emergency orders for the next year? If that's what it's going to take? Or do we do something else administratively to recognize again this long-term new normal and take the longer perspective that it's different than an emergency? It's long-term. Certainly there's things that we need to take into consideration. But, and so I'm not sure what that looks like, but continuing to call it an emergency, I'm, I'm struggling with. But there's still value in what we're doing. And so I'm just open to feedback and I guess challenge staff to think creatively on what that might look like. Thoughts? And we don't need to have a long discussion about it now, but just, we wanted to plant some seeds and start thinking about, again, what do we, what do we do with this, recognizing we might be in this situation for potentially at least another six months? And we've got some runway before we expire or need to reconsider that. So. All right, that ends council updates. We have a closed session to move into and I believe somebody has language to move us into a closed session. And also before we do that and take a vote to move into closed session, we do have a separate Zoom meeting to log into. And I guess clarification, will we, will we be coming back to this meeting to adjourn the meeting? Perfect. Okay, so we are going to move, all right.
So Mara, I just, I just want to make it clear, we're, we're going to check out of this meeting, go into the closed session and come back to the meeting. So we're going to be taking back and.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. All right, Mayor Bain, I make a motion, we go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 13D dot 05 subdivision 3B for confidential discussion regarding airport business park property.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. And Karen, could we have a roll call to move us into closed session, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye, and we're in closed session. Give Sam just a minute, otherwise we've got a quorum to adjourn. We'll give him just a minute. There we are. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second. Karen, could we have a roll call for adjournment, please?
Aye, and you're on mute.
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
And Mayor Bain.
Aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Good night.
Good night.